So I want to call to meeting the Independent School District number 283, School Board Meeting for Monday, January 28th. Call us to order at 7:12. We're running just a tad late because we had a pre-meeting that ended. First up is approval of the agenda. Today's agenda starts with open forum, followed by the superintendent's report. Then we have several discussion items, a construction update, a third review, a third review of the 2019 and 20 and 2020, 21 school year calendars options, curriculum and program review process, the listening session report, policy development, first reading of policies, 514 bullying, 522 student sex discrimination, non-discrimination, 524 Internet acceptable use, and the policy development second reading. Policies 533, admission of resident students, 534, assignment of students to schools, 535, release time for students. Then we have the consent agenda. And then our action agenda has approval of the school year calendar options, policy development second readings. And then we'll have communication and transmittals. I would suggest we amend the agenda to move the listening session report ahead of the calendar review, just in case you had any feedback. You did no feedback on the listening session? Perfect, then we won't need to do that. What that meant was that nobody showed up at the listening session that we had and talked about our calendars. So we don't need to hear that report first. So, I have a motion to approve the agenda as originally read.
So moved.
It's moved by Karen, seconded by Ken. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Approved 7-0. So first up is open forum. The only person I see out there is Tom Bravo, one of our wonderful employees. Tom, you want to speak to us about open forum?
Uh, I have no comment.
Okay, so we have nobody here for open forum. And we'll move on to the superintendent's report. Superintendent Rossi?
Right. Chair Gores, members of the board, this evening for my superintendent's report, I would like to share some information connected to our strategic priorities. So tomorrow, Tuesday, January 29th, and Wednesday, January 30th, we will be closed due to extreme forecasted weather conditions and dangerous wind chills. So school will be closed to all students, teachers, and staff. As you can see from the graph in front of you, the wind chills over the next three days will be beneath the warning threshold. So we will continue to monitor the weather conditions closely and make a final decision by 4:00 PM on Wednesday regarding the status of school on Thursday. But we really strongly encourage all parents, community members, and students to continue to monitor the district website. And that we'll communicate via our normal mechanisms to inform parents and students about school for Thursday. I would like to just take a moment and acknowledge Steve Schmitz, our band teacher here at the high school and middle school, as he was named 2019 Minnesota Teacher of the Year candidate for St. Louis Park Public Schools. As many of you up here know Steve, you know that he is an absolutely amazing instructor. And I actually had the first opportunity to meet Steve three years ago when I was still in the Osceola School District. And I attended a bar conference that was hosted in St. Louis Park. And he and his world drumming students performed amazingly in front of this conference of, you know, 350 people from all across the country. So we're extremely excited that Steve is being recognized from St. Louis Park. And he's one of 168 candidates for the 2019 Minnesota Teacher of the Year Award. The 2019 Minnesota Teacher of the Year will be announced on Sunday, May 5th, at the St. Paul River Center. And over the coming weeks, 25-member panel of community leaders will name a group of semifinalists and finalists. So we're all behind Steve, rooting him along, and hoping that he will be named Minnesota Teacher of the Year. And lastly, I would just like to take a moment to acknowledge our students from the One Act Play. If you hadn't heard, a huge congratulations goes out to our students, cast and crew of the Amish Project for placing first on day one of the 6AA One Act Play subsection. So that's a huge accomplishment for our students. They will have the section finals at Holy Angels on Saturday, February 2nd. And the performance begins at 9:00 AM. Admissions, $8 for adults and $6 for students. So on February 2nd, if you are available, please come out and support our students. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you. Thank you. Next up is a discussion item. And first up is the construction update from Tom Bravo, our facilities manager.
Thank you, Superintendent Rossi, Chair Gores, and school board members. I want to give you a construction update where we're at. Now that the last summer is over with and everything went well, now we're moving ahead for this coming summer and things that we're doing right now. So with that, I will start. So I want to give you, again, what we're going to overview, what we're going to be doing this summer. Of course, Aquila, it's going to be shut down for this summer. There's going to be new furniture, upgrading the classrooms in all the areas, the media center. Also, the kitchen's going to be upgraded. At Cedar Manor, of course, that's under construction right now. We're about 90% done in demolition, so we're ahead of schedule. Because of the fact that before this cold weather hit, we had some good weather. We were able to put the footings in, in the new addition for the front entryway, which that wasn't supposed to start until April. So we're doing very well on that part of it. But you're going to see, of course, the new kitchen, all the classrooms with new furniture, site improvements, and then full renovation of the whole building. Middle school, again, we're looking at the media center addition with some site improvements and the mechanical systems. That project is, the bids are supposed to be due next week with the pre-bid walkthrough that we had tomorrow. But I had to change that to Thursday, just because of the weather and so forth. And we're still scheduled for the bids to be open next week, next Wednesday. The high school, we're looking again at the locker rooms, tennis courts, the weight room, fitness center, a couple of classrooms that we're going to be doing some new furniture. And of course, the high school offices where, right now, the principal's office, the council's offices will be moving down to where the district office was occupying the space. Those bids were due this Wednesday. But again, because school closing, we changed it to Thursday afternoon to have the bid openings on that project. So with that, I just want to kind of quickly go over Aquila Elementary. And the green indicates all the classrooms are going to be with new furniture remodeling. The blue indicates the cafeteria. The two lighter greens are the two mock rooms that we did last year. So we're not going to be doing those. But we are going to be doing some fit on the furniture because now that we've had it six to eight months into it, there's some things that we need to make some adjustments to. And of course, the media center is the orange that we're going to be upgrading that area with furniture and some improvements. This is what it's going to look like. Thanks to, I want to thank the principals and the teachers and a lot of input from staff and so forth. We're going to be standardizing. And so this is a typical kindergarten room at Aquila. So all the kindergarten rooms are going to look like this. And they're flexible enough that they're going to be moving around. They can move around their furniture, have it one position one day and another position the next day. So that's the kindergarten one. This will be first and second grade. What's going to be laid out in the classroom, first and second grade, with cabinets and mobile carts around it. Again, they're all going to have the standardization same. So they'll be able to share, be able to, again, be flexible enough for just changing it around in the future. And then lastly, third to fifth grade. So, you know, with third and fifth grade, we really had to have a lot of meetings on this one just because we want to make sure that we get the right furniture for third graders as well as fifth graders. But thanks to the teachers, again, and the principals and so forth, we accomplished that with this type of layout. So now it's going to all be standardized. And we'll be able to take advantage of the rooms much more because they're going to be flexible. So kind of give you an overview of PSI at Cedar Manor, furniture selections, and construction progress pictures. So again, if you look at it, this is one of the classrooms that's going to be at Park Spanish Immersion, and it is their kindergarten. So again, their kindergarten classrooms will have standardized furniture. Some are similar to Aquila, some are a little bit different. Same with first and second grade, and then third to fifth grade. So we're moving along, and all the furniture now has been specified and on order because now it takes about five to six months to order furniture these days. Giving you some pictures. This is the new addition that's going to happen with the new entryway. Again, we got to put the footings in. So we're very fortunate that the weather helped out in the early of January. See, all the demolition's pretty much completed, new entryways, things like that. This is kind of giving you an overview of how it's being gutted out. So next pictures I'm going to be sharing with you in about a month or so is going to see a lot of construction going on because all the studs are starting to go up now. Transition Plus, we finally, because we were able to start Cedar Manor where we wanted to, we completed Lennox Project with moving Transition Plus over to the community center. And that went very, very smooth. It went over winter break with a couple of small little changes. But for the most part, they're very, very happy with their new home. And wanted to give you some pictures of what their new home looks like. They have a multipurpose room. Of course, the second level hallways and so forth. Everything's cleaned up, new lighting, new furniture, things to that nature. Couple of their classrooms. It's pretty bright, they love it. They love that, all that glass, that sunlight coming in. They thought it was magnificent in that space. So with that, I wanted to also give you a quick, quick overview of the solar panel process that we're doing right now. Because I know that's a topic of discussion, not only with students, with the community, and some staff and so forth, that this is our first stab in the proposed locations. We're going to be looking at all types of locations. We've talked to other school districts, we've talked to experts. The direction that we've given people that are interested in this is that we don't want to put solar panels on existing roofs that are not going to be replaced for a while because it takes money to take them off and put them back on. So we're looking at, as we do new roof replacements, which we are going to have to do in the next, you know, two to 10 years, that's where we're going to be looking at solar replacements. So what you're going to see here is where we have new additions and where we're going to be proposing a new roofing. First one, of course, is the high school with the new addition of the weight room. And of course, the activity center next to it, we're going to be doing some recertification of that roof so that we will have it, so that it doesn't have to be touched for another 25 years after we're done. And then we can put the solar panels on. Same thing with the middle school. As you can see, we're going to be doing the new addition of the performing arts and also the cafeteria area, along with the addition of cafeteria. We haven't really said much about the media center yet because that is a new roof. But that roof's so small that they said it may not have a value to putting panels on there. So we are still evaluating that. And then finally, at Cedar Manor, because we're doing work there, we're going to be replacing a portion of the roof of the oldest one. That's going to be brand-new. And that's when we're going to be putting panels in that area. So we do have an RFP that's being developed, a request for proposal, for 14 vendors that really want to bid on it for solar panels. And so we should be getting some good numbers. There's federal money out there that we're going to be looking at, capturing. And we're hoping to have it by a year from now to have panels in this district. And that's it.
Thanks, Tom. Karen?
Tom, I really want to commend you for working with our students in the Environmental Club Roots and Shoots because they've had a number of concerns. And I really feel like this plan addresses their interests in a way that is sensible for our construction timeline so that we're getting the most bang for our buck. And I really, really appreciate your attentions to that. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
This might be a question for you or for Aston. And it may be repetitive since we've talked about furniture quite a bit. But as I was looking through it and I saw the variety of seating options, do teachers find that certain students sit in certain types of chairs throughout the year? Or do they tend to rotate the kids around to different chair setups throughout the school year?
I can tell you that in the mock rooms, they're finding that out, that the students are actually picking different pieces of furniture almost every other day or something like that. And the teachers are kind of saying, yeah, if you learn, if this is a good environment, it's fine. So that's where, when we did the mock rooms, we have to make some adjustments. And that's what this new layout that we have with the teachers that we're involved in is saying, okay, we want to take what's good from there. And we want to interject some of our thoughts. And that's what we came with this. So we're hoping that it is going to create a different type of learning. Ashton, if you want to add to that?
You know, I appreciate those comments. And all I would add is, you know, we've heard, particularly from teachers that have mock room space, that it's really shifting us from more of a traditional model of assigned seating. So what we've heard is that, to your point, students are accessing all of the furniture. And it's flexible, and it's more of a community feel regarding space and seating. So it's really shifting us from this very traditional assigned seating structure to more of a flexible, community use of space.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Appreciate the update.
Thank you.
So next on the agenda, we have the third review of the 2019, 20, and 2020, 21 school year calendars by Rick Cryer, Director of Human Resources.
I don't, I don't know what else to say.
I believe the calendars that are in front of you are the same calendars we presented more in-depth at the January 14th meeting. We did get just a bit more feedback from some employee groups. And I know that the board had a listening session. And that didn't bring people out to say, oh, my gosh, you must do it one way or the other. So the calendars that you have in front of us, again, like we said, we went through them at our last meeting. We made no changes to these except for to update the recommended 128 of 2019. And I will answer any questions. Otherwise, we would hope that you would approve these so that we can start planning Kids Place calendars and all the other calendars that are waiting on this one.
I do want to thank you for giving us that extra time just because we did have it out there for the listening session. And even though we didn't get a lot of feedback from that, I thought it was important to make sure that we had the opportunity. So thank you for giving us that little bit of extra time. And I think this seems like a good balance of, I think we talked about this last time, of the various things that we heard from various people we heard. We don't want to lose MEA, and we don't want to get out in the middle of June. And we don't, you know, not everybody's going to be 100% happy, probably. But I think it's a really excellent balance. The one thing that I just want to keep on our radar going forward is that we've kind of made a change to move the professional development days earlier in the year.
Yes.
And we have a lot fewer days off, or even early release days, which we don't have any now, which is fantastic, later in the year. So what I noticed about the next two years, and in particular, I think it's the second one, there's like eight weeks between spring break and Memorial Day. And that's just, it's a lot. And I just want us to pay attention over the next couple of years as we work through these calendars and think about, is that working? Is that too much? Do we need to kind of reconfigure? Do our teachers, do our kids need a break at some point in there? So we have it in our minds to collect some of that feedback over the next two years as we work through these two calendars. But thank you again. This is a ton of work. And I know it's really hard to achieve a good balance. And I think that this really gets added.
As Ann said, we did hear from folks who didn't want us to get out too late in June. And so with respect to the 2021 calendar, I know that that is a June 10th, last day of school. I did just want to highlight for the folks at home that we aren't starting until the 8th. As Rick, you have made clear before, that's kind of the latest possible start ever of a school year, right?
It is the latest Labor Day can be.
Right. So we are starting later, which is why we're getting out later that year.
And we thought we started earlier this year. And here we are at the end of January approving. The goal for the superintendent and cabinet next year will be to start even earlier and hopefully target to have this action ready for the board by the December meeting. Because we learned, again, that there are a lot of people waiting on this calendar than to set their program calendars. And so I think if we start our conversations and listening around October 1st and then, you know, have, come back to the board in November, maybe we can be ready to make an action, you know, at the December meeting before we're off to winter break.
Yeah, Rick, nice job balancing all the feedback from the stakeholders. I do want to mention, though, you missed in the 2018-19 calendar, a two-hour delay on January 28th. And two days off on the 29th and 30th. If you can.
My forecasting was off there, yeah.
But other than that, nice.
Rick, I just want to, I just whispered to Aston, but we do have a cushion built into the calendar so that we don't have to make up days. We can miss a certain number of days due to weather, and we're going to be okay.
We have a, we have a lot of extra time for elementary and middle school, and even the high school, except for the seniors. And so we have about a four-day cushion for the, you know, for the seniors. But since graduation tends to be, you know, two days, at least two days before the, you know, the last day of instruction, they have two fewer days than the other students. So as long as this doesn't become, you know, five, six days, we should be, we should be good.
Chair Gores, if I could also add that if, for some reason, let's say worst-case scenario, the cold weather snap is not only Tuesday and Wednesday, but Thursday as well, we'll have another 13.6 hours of available time for seniors. So that just means that it can't be cold anymore for the rest of the year.
That sounds good. Rick, I want to thank you for all your work. I noticed on both of these calendars that we're going to an eight-day winter break as opposed to a 10-day winter break on one of the calendars. It depends on where the holiday particularly falls. So I would be interested in follow-up on what we see, if we see any change in student absences or teacher substitutes making that shift. Because, you know, there's a difference of opinion in some, you know, on that. And I just want us to know what happens. So that that may inform us in terms of what we do going forward. Okay?
Will do. And it's not just, the calendar isn't just the Rick Show. There is a whole group of people who come together around this. And so we thank everybody for, you know, digging in and providing their input as well.
Well, Rick, and I'm assuming that your feedback from our teachers' union was primarily supportive or, you know, the majority was supportive of the calendar as you're proposing it?
Yeah, they came to this as, you know, the best of the available options. And so they, you know, they, how do you want to say? Agreed to support this, you know, this version. But, you know, there are things that, you know, they will have members that they don't like the coming back, or they don't like some of the other pieces. So it was the most acceptable versions.
Thank you. Well done. Difficult task. We appreciate your being the one that carries the ball on this. So next up, we have the Curriculum and Program Review Process, and presented by Dr. Patrick Duffy, the Director of Curriculum and Instruction.
Good evening. I'm really excited to be here tonight and to share just a little bit about the process for curriculum and instructional review. I just want to start by saying I'm very grateful to work in a school district where I've met so many people that don't just profess their values, but live them on a daily basis. It starts with our superintendent, who reminds us often in these meetings about the purpose of public education and how important it is to maintaining a democracy. And, you know, I look at a process for reviewing how we teach and what we teach much the same way. Something that's going to really be an opportunity for us to live out our values. And in the last few months, I've had the great honor to meet with and talk to many leaders from around the district, including all of you, members of our cabinet, principals, teacher leaders. And what I've learned is that there are a lot of good things happening in St. Louis Park. And there's a reason why we are being looked at by many people around the region for the work that we do. With that, one of the things that I've noticed in my conversations is that as we do all of this good work, one of the things that many people say they value is the collaboration and the working together. But often, is, what I believe happens in public schools is we can easily get working within our silos. So my hope is that we can continue a process where we can bring multiple people together and we can work on looking at how we teach and what we teach in a really transformative way. I want to give a special shout-out to a number of folks from around the region who I talked to outside of the district as well. In particular, I got some language from the Director of Teaching and Learning in Spring Lake Park, who, of all of them, really had some language that brought clarity to a process that I feel can sometimes be mystifying to a lot of folks. And what I really saw was something that could work for us as well. And the idea of having three phases to a process. One where we really take time to look in and know who we are as a district, looking with our lens of equity and trying to understand why we do what we do. And is it really looking for a new curriculum? Or do we need to look at how we're collaborating with each other and how we're making relationships and connecting with children? And then moving into another phase with clarity where we can say, we're going to really look at what sort of work we're doing. And are we following trends? Or are we sticking with the mission and strategic plan? And then the third piece is really about building systems that will outlast us. And we have many great people that are doing incredible things around the district. And I think many of them want to find ways to make sure that the work for them outlasts the work that they're doing here with their feet. And with all of it, making sure that we are starting and using the conditions and the protocols that we've learned from many of our outside partners, and making sure that that's present throughout. None of this that I'm sharing with you really is new. What I'm hoping that it does is it brings some clarity to a process about steps that we can take to review our curriculum, to review our instruction, and help folks around the district understand where we are in a different process and different curricular areas. And potentially be a process for also reviewing any of our programs that work specifically with children. So with that said, there are a number of steps that we might take moving forward. I know that a value that I've heard throughout the district is the idea of shared leadership. And, you know, I think as we work through this, looking for small teams of experts within any field, whether that's in math, which we'll be starting to review this spring, looking for folks across K-12, pre-K-12, that can help us really understand where we need to go and what's going on in math. But then having a large, wide representative group that also brings in the voice of students and parents and elevates that to really understand what are their expectations? And are they being met in our classrooms? And how do we then respond to that in a way that's going to be effective? You know, my hope is to work with our principals and our teacher leaders in February to really help bring clarity to this process so everyone can understand where we're going. And from there, work with other systems leaders to see how this can also impact any of the other work we're doing around collaboration and professional development. And with that, I just want to end by saying I'm really grateful for the strategic plan that we have. I think it gives us a great framework for making sure that this work that we do isn't separate from the work of the district, but rather is something that's going to really strengthen the mission and the strategic plan we have. So I'd love to open it up for questions, if you have any or comments. Yes, Ken?
I have more of a statement rather than a question, if you believe. So as you were going through your presentation, I was listening and digesting what you were saying. And I like that you're going out to experts to understand what, say, the math curriculum is for K-12. And what.
And what is the current vibe of whatever that subject you're talking. The one thing I didn't hear, and I actually was happy not to hear, is teaching to the core or to the standard. I can't remember the name, what it was. But how we're just trying to teach to the test so that we can pass the test. So I like what you're doing in teaching the kids that, going to the curriculums that we need to have them understand and learn for the future, instead of just passing that big test.
I like the both and I like that they can pass the test too, just for the record.
Well, I'd like them to pass the test. Not everybody can just learn that, right? Because we've already seen. Because we've already seen that in our scores, right? If we just teach to the test, then many people miss it. But if we can teach them to how we understand how they learn, and then we're going to be better successful, the kids will be more successful. I think that's the approach that you're looking at in understanding what the vibe is and then trying to teach that in the kid's space instead of pushing the core. Sorry.
Just going to say, I had the pleasure of meeting with you last week. And I'm very pleased with your emphasis on how it's equally important about how we collaborate as well as the actual curriculum. And I like that you sort of, we're going to try and empower our teachers to feel that they're included and that everyone has a part in developing the curriculum.
Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you.
Well done. So next up, we have the School Board Listening Session Report. And we, it's Ann and Jim Bennecke, you're at Ops and Inns. So maybe, Ann, you want to start us out?
Thank you, Nancy. I'm going to be, I'm a little hoarse, so I'm going to be, try to be few words. First, I do want to thank, really quickly, Julia McBride-Bibby, who came in on a Saturday to serve as our greeter at that meeting. And I had at least, I had a couple of parents actually say, oh, I'm so glad to have this meeting on a Saturday. Most, you know, I can't make evening meetings that often. So thank you for being willing to come in and serve as our gracious greeter that morning, Julia. So we had a listening session. I think we had about 12 of us there or so. And I'm just going to give a kind of brief summary of what some of the issues that were brought forward so that the board can hear those. I'm going to put my glasses on so I can see it. One parent had a question about student access to bathrooms at the middle school and the high school and just wanted to make sure that bathroom access during the school day would be consistent and sort of that there would be not so many closed bathrooms during the school day, that kids had plenty of access to the bathroom. Another suggestion was about having student tickets for athletic and school events, saying that the, as students go to a lot of, they want to go to a lot of their friends' activities and events, it kind of adds up over time. So they had a suggestion of maybe a pass that a student could buy at the beginning of the year that would get them into any event throughout the rest of the year. And I know the superintendent had mentioned that he had talked about that already with the athletic director, so thank you. One parent wanted to discuss the implementation of the district's technology policy, which is actually on our agenda later today. Just wanting to make sure that we had sort of educational value to the technology and to the media that we're offering to students in the classroom, including notification to parents of what their students are consuming in the classroom and an ability for parents to opt out or review if, what their students are viewing in class. And then we had a really nice, robust discussion of the start time study. And I do want to thank, I won't call him out by name, I don't know if he wants to be called out by name, but one member of the start time committee did attend the meeting and was very helpful and able to kind of answer questions, but also was listening to what the people at the listening session said and bringing, was going to bring that back to the committee so that, I'm really grateful for that. Just some questions that people brought up. If elementary school students go to school earlier in the day, is there a potential loss of revenue for KidsPlace and/or potential increase in bus costs if people are only using KidsPlace at one end of the day rather than both? One parent shared that the early middle school start time is really working well for their family and that it actually, she thought it had kind of taught her children a good lesson in managing their time. A question about if there would be an effect on private school students who are transported on our buses within St. Louis Park. One parent had the idea of a late bus, like the middle school currently has for elementary school students, to get extra help after school. The middle school has actually two late buses, but one that's just about 45 minutes after the end of the school day for students who just need a little bit of extra time at school. There was definitely an overall desire to maintain the large number of activities currently offered after school at the middle school, even if the middle school were to have a later start time, and a desire to expand offerings that are athletic but non-competitive. And then finally, a parent who is also a teacher in the district wanted to make sure that the start trends wouldn't make it more difficult for teachers who teach in this district but have their own children in other districts, just to make, making sure that their schedules would be able to work because we don't want to lose our amazing, wonderful, high-quality teachers that we have in our district. Jim, do you have any, anything to add?
No, I think that was a very thorough summary of that. I was just glad to see such a great turnout. I think that's the biggest turnout I've seen so far, so I hope it continues to be like that.
Thank you, Ann. Thank you, Jim. And thank you, Julia. So next up, we're going to move to the first reading of several of our policies, and we'll take them one at a time. Let's start with Policy 514, which is the bullying prohibition policy. Any comments?
Chair Goris, if I could just mention that the three policies that are up for first reading tonight, 514, 522, and 524 are all policies that are recommended by the Minnesota School Board for annual review. So 514 was reviewed last September. 522 was reviewed February of 18, and 524 was reviewed June of 18. So there were no recommended changes, but these are just up for annual review.
Thank you. I had wanted to make sure that the MSB hadn't suggested changes. It's just their annual review. Okay. So any other comments on 514?
I noticed just a couple of quotation mark typos that we must have missed last time around in the definitions section, so I can just mark those up and pass them along to Julia to swap out.
On 524, just because we'd had this conversation at, oh, we're, okay.
So next up is 522. Anybody have any comments on 522? This is the student sex nondiscrimination. All right, now we're up to 524, and that is the Internet Acceptable Use and Safety Policy. And, Ann, you want to?
Yes, we had this conversation at the listening session I just mentioned. And so I just, I guess the question would be for the superintendent and not necessarily to answer tonight, but for our next reading of this, just to, just to make sure that what we're saying in our policy is reflected in our procedures and that our procedures are being reflected in our practice. That's kind of what I'd like to just sort of ensure from the top here.
Anybody else have any comments on 524? Okay, we'll come back to, these are the first reading, and they'll come back on our agenda next time as a second reading, and we'll can get whatever feedback we may have on the policy procedures from the superintendent's perspective. So up now, we have the second reading of policies, three policies, 503.3, 503.4, 503.5. Does anybody, I'm going to take these all at once since it's the second reading. So does anybody have any comments on any of those? Mary?
On 503.3, I'm wondering about changing some language regarding parents to just include parents or guardians. So where the pupil's parents or guardians live in the first sentence, and then again, there's a couple of those references in the second paragraph. Is there any reason that we shouldn't be including guardians in that section? Legal guardians, guardians?
That could certainly be added.
And Superintendent Asai, do you know of the reason that we wouldn't be needing to ask if the parents are not living together, the whereabouts of both should be ascertained? Are we concerned about the location of both parents or just the custodial parent?
I can't speak directly to the intention when the policy was, oh, go ahead.
I think part of it has been traditionally to make sure that communication is robust, especially we have a number of families with joint custody arrangements. And so wanting to ensure that both residences have the same information at the same time, even if one of the joint custody parents is not residing in the district and not necessarily getting like the city-school district calendar, et cetera. And really, a shout-out, especially at the elementary level, I love the peach jar option on the school sites because it's just so easy to see a lot of that news right there in one place. So that is my understanding of why we had that intention at one point.
That seems like a great reason. So it would just be changing parents or guardians and those couple of references in 503.3. And then the other suggestion that I have after I reviewed this for the second time is on 503.4, I propose in Section 3 that we delete the phrase "exceptional" and just simply say, "Pupils for whom special education classes are provided by the school district shall be enrolled in the district where such classes are located." And the reason for that is I conferred with Tammy Reynolds, our Director of Student Services, on this, and the use of exceptional pupils in that situation is a little bit not commonplace usage any longer. And so simply saying pupils for whom special education classes are provided is sufficient. And then it's somewhat not relevant at this particular point, but we do not bus our special education students to different sites. They are offered all of the services that they need at their particular elementary school. But that potentially may change going forward. We don't know, you know, what that will look like in perpetuity, so to keep that language there doesn't seem to hurt anything necessarily. But again, just deleting the word "exceptional" and starting that with pupils would be my proposal.
So does anybody have any objections to the changes that Mary's proposing? If not, when we get to the action item, I'll just include that. Yeah, they sound reasonable to me as well. Okay. So now we're up to the consent agenda. Just want to take one minute to take a quick look through that. And I think based on the one that I have here, I, well, first, the question is, is there anything anybody wants to pull off of the consent agenda? And in answer to that, I have one thing, and that is the special meeting minutes for January 14th of 2019. I think they need to have the, some additions made, and we can bring them back next time. So anybody else have any, anything on the consent agenda you'd want to pull off? Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda minus the item that's been pulled off? Moved by Karen, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ken. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, passes 7-0. 6-0, thank you, I missed that. So now we are up to the action agenda. First up is approval of the, this is for you, Rick. First up is approval of the 2019, 2020, and 2020, 2021 school year calendar options. It is recommended that the School Board approve the final revision of the 2019, 20, and 2020, 2021 school year calendars. Do we have a motion as presented? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Joe, is there a second? Seconded by Ken, is there any discussion?
We sure we don't need one more meeting? Just the one more?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 6-0. Next up, we have the policy development. It is recommended that the School Board approve the second reading of Policies 503.3 with the edits as proposed by Mary, Admission of Resident/Student, 503.4, Assignment of Student to Schools with the edits proposed by Mary, and 503.5, Release Time for Student as presented. Is there a motion? Moved by Karen, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mary, is there any discussion? We're on the motion to pass the policies on the second reading with the edits as Mary proposed. So moved by Ken, seconded by Mary, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? It passes 7-0. That brings us, unless I've missed anything, to Communication and Transmittals. Do we have any communications and transmittals?
Since no one's up, I will. This weekend, I had the opportunity to volunteer and judge a competition, DECA competition. This DECA is the business club that is spread across the, across the United States and across the nation, actually, in high schools. And I was able to judge one small portion of the, this region, I think it was the regional competition. And part of the regions were Wayzata, Minnetonka, St. Louis Park, and Minneapolis schools, Aseo and things like that. But a lot of schools there, a lot of kids there. It was great to see all these kids come up with creative ways of addressing business issues and thinking on their feet and answering questions, and it was a great opportunity. And then they just learned today that, who made it to state? And it sounds like eight of our St. Louis Park students have made it to state. And they'll compete in March 3rd, 4th, and 5th, I do believe, in Minneapolis, I do believe. And it will, from there, they'll, if they still rank out there, and then they'll go to the Nationals in Florida. So we have a promising couple of groups. There was, there was two of them that were ranked between 1, 2, and 3, which means you automatically go to state, and you also get extra points when you go to state. And being a proud father I am, my daughter made number one. Anya was one of the number ones. So that was a great opportunity, a great thing for her to happen, and for all of our St. Louis Park kids did a very, very, very good job. And you can actually tell the difference between the St. Louis Park kids versus some of the other kids. And of the other kids in how they present themselves, how they carry themselves, and some of the depth of information that they had. So it was, it was a great opportunity, and I told Ms. Lugo and Ms. Ross that I will certainly do it again next year and the following year. So hats off to the DECA club.
Well, congratulations to all of our students and your daughter.
Just coming up, Saturday, February 2nd, we have the ECFE Winter Meltdown Carnival from 10 to noon at Central. And then the following Saturday, Community Ed is having the Summer Info Fair from 10 to noon in the Central Gym. So something really nice and warm to look forward to, both Saturdays coming up. Thank you.
I'll try to get this out. Speaking of Community Ed, next Thursday, so a week and a couple days from now, hopefully it'll be warmer by then, the Community Ed, CAC, Heart of the Matter Community Discussion on Food Insecurity, Hidden Reality in St. Louis Park, will be taking place in the Lenox Community Center Cafeteria. It's going to be a panel that the CAC Committee has been working on for quite some time, including some representative of STEP, a representative from SLP Seeds, a representative from Hunger Impact Partners, and then students who work with the bird feeder right here at the high school. And please do consider bringing a donation to STEP. This is a free event. You can register online, or you can probably come and register right there, too. So please, please join us for this important Heart of the Matter Community Discussion. I have a couple of other things. The District 287 is hosting a policymaker summit Friday, February 8th, so the morning after this food insecurity panel, at the North Education Center for school board members, legislators. They've invited all the legislators from the 287-member districts to join them to talk about trauma and how schools have become the front line of the children's mental health system. So this is 10 to noon, Friday, February 8th, at the North Education Center, and all of you are invited. Finally, the legislature has gotten underway, and so if you haven't checked it out yet, go online and check out the AMSD legislative platform or the MSBA legislative platform as well. But in the AMSD one, you might see some familiar faces from this table and from our high school. So that is fantastic. So make sure to check those out so that you know what to write to them about, because they're going. And Superintendent Osai, is it okay if I mention what's happening tomorrow? So tomorrow, Superintendent Osai is going to be testifying at a hearing of the House Education Policy Committee on the racial equity work that St. Louis Park is doing, and they asked four districts, including 287 and St. Louis Park, who are doing different kinds of work on racial equity, to come and present to that committee. So that will be tomorrow afternoon at 2:30 in St. Paul. So welcome to join.
Ann, is that the committee that's chaired by our Representative Cheryl Yoakin?
Yes.
Sweet. She's also coming to the policy meeting in February, so it's all good. Anyone else?
This past week, Superintendent Osai and Nancy and I had the pleasure of meeting with a representative from newly-elected Congresswoman Ilhan Omar's office. We were going to be meeting with the Congresswoman as well, but she was actually staying in Washington through the duration of the shutdown for her votes. I believe that, maybe she'll be coming home soon. But we were able to talk with Matthew about many of the issues that are facing our district and our school. We obviously raised the special ed cross-subsidy, and we gave some pretty tangible examples of what we could be doing with that money if we were not funding our unfunded mandates, including buses. As Sarah Thompson likes to say, in the ideal world, we'd have three bus routes all going at the same time, and that's something that we could do more easily if we had an extra $4.8 million from our general fund. But we also talked about issues that are facing free and reduced lunch program. We talked about our equity work. We talked about disparities in special education and discipline, and I was personally impressed that he did seem to know about a lot of these issues already. These were things that we were not necessarily educating him on for the first time, but he appreciated hearing the, in some cases, innovative but unique ways that St. Louis Park is addressing these. And he encouraged anybody to really reach out to the Congresswoman's office to share their stories of how all of these things are impacting their lives. And hopefully, this is the beginning of a long relationship where we can work together to make change for the benefit of the kids here in Park.
Susan Lindgren, Family Fun Night, this Friday, February 1st, at the middle school. I believe it's 6 to 8 o'clock. It is wild.
Newly arriving bingo this year. Bingo, people.
I didn't think it could get any more wild. Apparently it can't.
And I would say that on Thursday, Superintendent Osai and Sarah Thompson were at the PSI PTO, and I was there as well. They presented, I listened, and muted as another listening session, and the primary topics from our point of view were the school start times and then getting some feedback on what it's like for them to be anticipating their move into the new building that's formerly known as Cedar Manor. And what was enlightening to me is they really, many of folks have never been there, have no idea how it's going to work, and are really kind of looking forward to being on-site and to get a feel for how the space and the driving and the dropping off and the whole shift will move while they're being led by their Principal Cory Masowski, who's just terribly excited about it and doing a very good job of kind of marshaling all energy as they finish this year strong while preparing for the move. Seeing no one else raising their hand, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Mary. Is there a second? Second by Ann. All in favor? Aye. Passes 7-0. At about 8:10, I think we set a record.